The clerk will please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise. I will ask Counselor Baker to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as Counselor Baker leads us into Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is my great pleasure to introduce my friend, the Reverend Daniel Rogers. He's the founder and the lead pastor of Christ the King Church in Dorchester. He's been involved in full-time ministry for over 20 years. Pastor Dan played football at the University of Georgia, completed college, and then joined the staff of a ministry called Athletes in Action. He and his wife Michelle spent nine years ministering to college and professional athletes around the country before moving to Greeley, Colorado to assist in starting new churches. In 2006, they moved to Athens, Georgia to organize outreach at a local congregation while he completed his Masters of Divinity from Reformed Theological Seminary. Pastor Dan, his wife Michelle, and their five children moved to Fields Corner area of Dorchester in 2008 to join families who desired to start a church that loved and cared for the neighborhood of Dorchester and the city of Boston. Pastor Dan and his family have fallen in love with the city of Boston and hope to live out their days serving their beloved city and neighborhood of Dorchester. Without further ado, Reverend Dan Rogers.
Thank you, Counselor. It is a privilege to be able to open this proceedings in prayer. I'm reminded of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said that Jesus redefined greatness when Jesus said that the greatest among you will be your servants. And I think the temptation in these hallowed halls is sometimes to define greatness in terms of power, money, popularity, and votes. Let me pray for us that today we would pursue true greatness of serving one another. Our gracious, eternal God, we are thankful for the privilege to be able to be here today. We are thankful for the privilege to be able to serve our beloved city. And we would pray and ask that you would give us the help we need to do what you have called us to do on this day. We pray that you would give us hearts of both compassion and justice, that you would give us attitudes of civility and love and affection and empathy towards one another. We pray that this would all end to a peaceful city, a city of prosperity, a city where people love their neighbors and enjoy life. And we make our prayer in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Rogers, for your inspiring message in prayer. Counselor Baker?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Daniel Rogers, and thank you, Counselor Baker. At this time, I'd like to recognize the 2015 Ward Fellows from Boston Latin School, which Counselor O'Malley has invited today here. Would you all please rise? Stand up. There you go. Thank you for being here. Hope you enjoyed the proceedings. Hope you were inspired by our actions today. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1238, Message and Order Authorizing the Police Department to Accept and Expand a Donation of a 2008 Genuine Rough House R50 Scooter, VIN R F V M V P M 20191003236, from Scooters Go Green. The scooter will be used as a bait scooter in areas identified as hotspots to apprehend scooter thieves.
Counselor Murphy?
Mr. President, I'd like to move suspension of rules and passage of docket 1238 at this time.
Sure. Counselor Murphy, move suspension of rules and passage of docket 1238. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1238 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1239, Notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from Sunday, July 19, 2015 until Thursday, July 23, 2015.
Docket 1239 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1240, The Constable Bonds of Charles Meeby Meeba, having been duly approved by the collector treasurer, was received and approved.
We'd like to move to approve these bonds as part of docket 1240. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Docket 1240 is approved under usual terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1241, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Mark Lu as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 8, 2016.
Docket 1241 will be placed on file.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1242, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2017.
Docket 1242 will be placed on file.
Docket 1242 will be placed on file.
Docket 1242 will be placed on file.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1243, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Mark Lu as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 8, 2016.
Docket 1241 will be placed on file.
Docket 1242 will be placed on file.
Docket 1243, Docket 1244, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Mark Lu as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 8, 2016.
Docket 1245, Docket 1246, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2017.
Docket 1247 will be placed on file.
Docket 1248 will be placed on file.
Docket 1249, Docket 1250, Notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from Sunday, July 19, 2015 until Thursday, July 23, 2015.
Docket 1251 will be placed on file.
Docket 1252, Docket 1253, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1254 will be placed on file.
Docket 1255, Docket 1256, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Mark Lu as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 8, 2016.
Docket 1257 will be placed on file.
Docket 1258, Docket 1259, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1260 will be placed on file.
Docket 1261, Docket 1262, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1263 will be placed on file.
Docket 1264, Docket 1265, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1266 will be placed on file.
Docket 1267, Docket 1268, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1269 will be placed on file.
Docket 1270, Docket 1271, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1272 will be placed on file.
Docket 1273, Docket 1274, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1275 will be placed on file.
Docket 1276, Docket 1277, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1279 will be placed on file.
Docket 1280, Docket 1281, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1282 will be placed on file.
Docket 1283, Docket 1284, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1285 will be placed on file.
Docket 1286, Docket 1287, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1288 will be placed on file.
Docket 1289, Docket 1290, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1291 will be placed on file.
Docket 1292, Docket 1293, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1294 will be placed on file.
Docket 1295, Docket 1296, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1296 will be placed on file.
Docket 1297, Docket 1298, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1299 will be placed on file.
Docket 1300, Docket 1301, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1302 will be placed on file.
Docket 1303, Docket 1304, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1305 will be placed on file.
Docket 1306, Docket 1307, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1309 will be placed on file.
Docket 1310, Docket 1311, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1312 will be placed on file.
Docket 1313, Docket 1314, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1315 will be placed on file.
Docket 1316, Docket 1317, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1318 will be placed on file.
Docket 1319, Docket 1320, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1321 will be placed on file.
Docket 1322, Docket 1323, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1324 will be placed on file.
Docket 1325, Docket 1326, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1327 will be placed on file.
Docket 1328, Docket 1329, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1330 will be placed on file.
Docket 1331, Docket 1332, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1333 will be placed on file.
Docket 1334, Docket 1335, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1336 will be placed on file.
Docket 1337, Docket 1338, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1339 will be placed on file.
Docket 1340, Docket 1341, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1342 will be placed on file.
Docket 1343, Docket 1344, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1345 will be placed on file.
Docket 1346, Docket 1347, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1348 will be placed on file.
Docket 1349, Docket 1350, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1351 will be placed on file.
Docket 1352, Docket 1353, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1354 will be placed on file.
Docket 1355, Docket 1356, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1356 will be placed on file.
Docket 1357, Docket 1358, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1359 will be placed on file.
Docket 1360, Docket 1361, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1362 will be placed on file.
Docket 1363, Docket 1364, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1368 will be placed on file.
Docket 1369, Docket 1370, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1371 will be placed on file.
Docket 1372, Docket 1373, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1374 will be placed on file.
Docket 1375, Docket 1376, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1377 will be placed on file.
Docket 1378, Docket 1379, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1380 will be placed on file.
Docket 1381, Docket 1382, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1383 will be placed on file.
Docket 1384, Docket 1385, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1386 will be placed on file.
Docket 1387, Docket 1388, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1389 will be placed on file.
Docket 1390, Docket 1391, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1392 will be placed on file.
Docket 1393, Docket 1394, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1395 will be placed on file.
Docket 1396, Docket 1397, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1398 will be placed on file.
Docket 1399, Docket 1400, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1401 will be placed on file.
Docket 1402, Docket 1403, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1404 will be placed on file.
Docket 1405, Docket 1406, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1407 will be placed on file.
Docket 1408, Docket 1409, Notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2016.
Docket 1410 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1157, message and order authorizing the Public Works Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources to retrofit city vehicles with alternative fuel sources.
Madam Clerk, why don't we read all the dockets? Nope. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello.
Madam Clerk, please read docket 1155, 1156, 1158, 1072, 1073, and 1074, please.
I was wondering where they went. So, if you would. Docket number 1155, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend the FY16 State 9/11 Department PSAP and Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grant of $3,253,317, awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 9/11 Department. Docket number 1156, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend the FY16 State 9/11 Department Training Grant Funds of $773,486, awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 9/11 Department. 1158, message and order authorizing the police department to accept and expend a donation of $125,000 from the Downtown Boston Business Improvement District for the purchase and installation of video cameras and related equipment in the downtown Boston area. Docket number 1072, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend funds of $275,400 for the Massachusetts Office of Victim Assistance for the purpose of expanding the behavioral health support for the Boston Police Staff and other local law enforcement agencies who respond to the Boston Marathon bombing. Docket number 1073, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $84,000 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the purpose of providing overtime to conduct three high-visibility enforcement mobilizations. Docket number 1074, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $69,990.40 for the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistant Funds for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, known as JAG, for the Boston Police Department for the purpose of supporting youth/police dialogues and events over a 12-month period. Docket number... Do you want me to stop there because those are public?
Yeah, no, stop at docket 1074. Right? Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Public Safety held a hearing on Monday, July 20, on these six dockets. The clerk did a good job enumerating what they're for. I'll go over that a little bit. It's about $4.5 million from the state for various programs. Some are reimbursable. There's $125,000 of a donation from the Boston BID, the Business Improvement District, for Downtown Crossing to install 17 cameras, in addition to the 247 cameras that the BPV currently has on streets in Boston. These 17 cameras will be hard-wired to Schroeder Plaza, so only the BPV will be actually looking at them, but they would go a long way towards enhancing public safety efforts at the BID. That was docket 1158. 1155, as the Chair of Ways and Means knows, and most of us know, we are upgrading our communications dispatch over BPV. We put several million dollars in this year's budget to do so. There's $3.2 million in outside funding coming in through this grant from the State Office of Public Safety and Security to enhance, to actually help with the maintenance and use to defray costs for the new computer-aided dispatch system, which will be used by Boston Police, Boston EMS, and Boston Fire Department dispatchers. Docket 1156 is a $773,000 award from the state to provide training fees and materials for training for BPV, BFD, and EMS to help them learn the new system and train them on the new system. These are our call takers and dispatchers. Docket 1072 is a $275,000 funding from the Office of Victim Assistance to assist in three Boston Police districts, to assist in the pay the salaries for the victim assistance folks who are victims of crime, and also to enhance the trauma... To... Let me rephrase that. To fund the trauma folks that are working with our emergency responders from the Boston Marathon. Several of those folks experienced trauma at the finish line from a few years ago, and we have some professional help dealing with our employees at BPV, BFD, and EMS. Docket 1073 is an $84,000 award from the state to provide overtime to conduct three high-visibility enforcement mobilizations. One of them is Click It or Ticket, and two of them are Drinking and Driving Don't Mix. And they're going to be used to pay for overtime funds in the city of Boston on city streets with state grant money over the course of the next year. And then finally, a $69,900 grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, which would provide jobs for youth and police dialogues over the next 12 months, so that young people in Boston, working through private sources, can continue a dialogue with our police officers in several areas of the city. It's a proven strategy that has worked, an overall public safety strategy, for the last several years, and is continuing under docket 1074. I urge my colleagues to approve all of the six dockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, I'm going to read each one of these individually for a vote. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1155. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1155 has passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of dockets 1156. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1156 has passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1158. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1158 has passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1072. All those in favor say aye? The ayes have it. I mean, all those nay? The ayes have it. Docket 1072 has passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1073. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1073 has passed. And Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1074. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1074 has passed. Madam Clerk, if you would read 1157, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1157, message and order authorizing the Public Works Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources to retrofit city vehicles with alternative fuel sources.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the reasons why I enjoy chairing the Committee on Environment and Parks so much is oftentimes you will see initiatives that are good for the environment, good policy, and also good for the taxpayer, and this and the subsequent order I will speak upon goes right to the heart of this. On July 15, Mayor Walsh referred to the committee to two items. The first is docket 1157. This is a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, which will provide for $350,000. That money will be used to retrofit a total of 35 city vehicles at a cost of about $10,000 per vehicle. Central Fleet has a total of about 1,100 or so vehicles, 20% of which are hybrid. 10 of these 35 vehicles will be passenger vans, the Senior Shuttle, BCYF, and the like, and they will be reduced to hybrid electric vehicles, so still use the gas but also an electric vehicle energy source. And the remaining 25 will be public works trucks, which will be retrofitted with propane conversions. This is obviously a lot less expensive and also a lot less harmful than gasoline or diesel. Those propane conversions cost about, as I said, about $10,000 per vehicle. They selected these 35 vehicles because they're high-use with high mileage and would obviously reap the greatest benefits in terms of not only fuel cost savings, but the reduction of poisonous emission gases that are clearly impacting our environment. The hybrid electric vehicles will reduce, produce cost savings of about 25% annually in fuel cost, and the retrofitted with propane conversions will save about 20% fuel economy, which translates to about $1,000 in fuel costs per year, or about a dollar per gallon of gas. This won't disrupt any of the operations. For the retrofit of electric vehicles takes about a day. For the propane conversions, it's about two or three days, so they'll be doing it one at a time, and over the next several months, this will all be done. But again, this is a state grant, which is going to help us lower our greenhouse gas emission footprint and also save money to the taxpayers, who ultimately are on the hook for fuel costs. So this is something that is great. I hope we can pass this today and look forward to seeing it implemented as soon as humanly possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1157. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1157 has passed. Madam Clerk, 1159, please.
Docket number 1159, message and order authorizing the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend a grant of $85,975 for the Green Communities Division of the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, known as DOER, for the purpose of installation of indirect active solar thermal domestic hot water systems at various Boston Fire Department facilities.
Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, a hearing was held yesterday on this and the docket I previously spoke upon. This is docket 1159. This is also a grant. The amount is less. It's just under $86,000 from the Green Communities Division of the Mass Department of Energy Resources. And this is used to install indirect active solar thermal domestic hot water systems at two firehouses, Engine 7 on Columbus Avenue and Engine 9 on Sumner Street in South Boston, as well as the Fire Academy on Moon Island. And what this will do is that these PV panels on the top of the roof, which will then heat water in a hot water tank, that'll be used for showers, for cleaning uniforms safely and efficiently. The grant is $85,975 from the state. Additionally, there will be a tax incentive from the Commonwealth, which is just over $88,000. So the total cost for the city to install this project will be $18,825 because of the grant, coupled with the generous tax incentive. And this will be used for two firehouses, which are constantly populated, as well as the Fire Academy. I asked Austin Blackman, the chief of Environment and Energy, how long till we would see this, you know, in terms of hot water savings. He said this would be a two- or three-year project where we could actualize the savings. So once again, better for the environment, harnessing solar energy, using new renewable energy sources, which we as a city and we as a society should be going after, as well as saving taxpayers' money over the long run. This is a terrific opportunity for us, and I urge passage today, and again, look forward to seeing it implemented as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1159. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1159 has passed. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1243, Counselor O'Malley offered the following resolution, designating Memorial Hero Square at the intersection of Dow and Cutter Roads in West Roxbury in memory of Edward John Parrish.
Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley on docket 1253.
Thank you, Mr. President. The family of Edward John Parrish, who was known as Buddy by his family and friends, contacted me several months ago. His niece is a constituent and a friend of mine in West Roxbury, and it painted the picture of this really, really remarkable young man, a Bostonian. He was born in Dorchester in 1925, grew up there, and felt the call, as many of the greatest generation did, to serve our country. He joined the Navy as an aviation radioman, second class, and he fought during the Second World War. He was assigned to Torpedo Squadron 45, where he's known as EJ by his squadron, and they were... He had taken off for a group mission, which he led alongside his fellow squad members. On January 3, 1945, the flight encountered unfavorable weather conditions, and a half hour after takeoff, the plane went missing. Mr. Parrish was 19 years old at the time. No official reports were received that Parrish survived, nor did his name appear on any list of reports from Japanese prisoner of war camps, and it was then determined the following January, 1946, that he had died in the line of duty. So once again, I know we've all done this, and this is really a remarkable part of our job, where we get to meet the children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, great-grandsons of these service members who were killed in the line of duty and want to appropriately mark their service with something like a hero square. So we've been working with them, and our great Veterans Department here at the city identified a location in West Roxbury. Actually, the sign has already gone up, so this is a little bit after the fact, but it obviously takes an act, and I think it's nice as we reflect today on the service of these men and women who predate us, what they've done for this country, and it's just a small but really fitting reminder of his service and sacrifice and those of all the Gold Star families. So I hope we can suspend and pass this today and continue to work with the Veterans Administration to recognize the incredible heroism of our forebears. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1243. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1243 has passed. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 1244, Counselor Flaherty offered the following order for hearing regarding linkage fees to support the Neighborhood Jobs Trust and Neighborhood Housing Trust.
Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty on docket 1244.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just to ask your indulgence, if I could add the name of my colleague, Counselor Steve Murphy, who unfortunately I didn't add on before we had filed it. There's no objections.
Yeah, there's no objections. Counselor Murphy, so added.
And as we all know, the city is experiencing unprecedented and unparalleled development boom with rebuilding in luxury residences popping up throughout all of our neighborhoods, and as our property values rise, many tenants are facing rent increases, lifelong residents are being priced out, and there's a growing concern for more affordable housing for both middle and low-income families. So linkage fees, as we all know, provide developers with community benefits that are allocated to the Neighborhood Jobs Trust and the Neighborhood Housing Trust. These trusts were established back in 1987 to ensure that large development projects bring a direct benefit to residents in form of jobs, job training, and affordable housing. Some may remember, there's a few here that have been here when I started. In 2000, I had moved to move the linkage formula to give it a cost of living adjustment. Linkage had started back in 1983, and when I joined the council in 2000, I realized that they hadn't even been given a cost of living adjustment over 17 years, so significantly boosted and added millions of dollars to affordable housing and to job trust. So job trust sort of lags a little bit behind the housing piece, but nonetheless, I want to have a hearing to discuss the linkage fee program and also to see how it's working and whether or not we could make that program more effective for the future of Boston. So... So I urge my colleagues to sign, look for an expedited hearing. And at the end of the day, because development is so rampant and it's affecting residents in every neighborhood, I think it's essential that we examine this now. And if there's things that we can put in place, which would include potentially adjusting the formula, it could be lowering the square footage threshold, it could be going after sort of smaller development projects, but which is small in one neighborhood, maybe large killing another neighborhood. But I'm also open for discussions for other solutions for my colleagues and to work with the administration and the advocates, as well as the real estate community, to see what's in the best interest of our city and moving forward, how we could best maximize this development boom to make sure that the residents, the lifelong residents, the stakeholders who've made the city such an attractive and great place to live and to work and to raise a family, and our academic and medical institutions, and folks that want to stay here, clearly we're going to need a linkage formula to make that happen. So look forward to an expedited hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to join Councilor Flaherty in his call to take a timely look at the linkage and jobs trust and housing trust. I believe I was here in 2000 when Councilor Flaherty moved to give them an increase, but I think that may have been the last time they got an increase. And I think an increase 15 years out is long overdue, and it's just a good topic, had a good time for us to be talking about. So glad my name was added and look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Baker?
Just a second.
Okay. Please add Councilor Baker's name, Councilor Siomo's name, Councilor Lamatina's name, Councilor McCarthy's name, Councilor Jackson's name, Councilor O'Malley's name, Councilor Presley's name, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zaken. And please add my name. Councilor Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too would like to have my name added and just wanted to remind people how important it is that the city participate in an effort to make housing more affordable, and the linkage program is a major mechanism and tool that we have to do that. So I commend Councilor Flaherty, ask that my name be added, and looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Councilor Yancy. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Yancy's name. That matter will be placed in the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1245, Councilor Wu offered the following resolution, supporting the passage of Massachusetts House Bill 97, an act relative to abusive practices to change sexual orientation and gender identity in minors, and urges the legislature to enact the proposed petition.
Chair recognizes Councilor Wu on Docket 1248.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Last month, we all celebrated the Supreme Court's historic, emotional, and sweeping decision to affirm the right to marriage equality across the country. And in Massachusetts, we celebrated especially hard because the fight really started here, where advocates for decades had been pushing the right to marry the person that you love. Today, Massachusetts advocates are still pushing, and the fight isn't over. We want Massachusetts, the United States, and City of Boston to be a place where you have the freedom to marry the person you love, to be the person you are. And among those advocates is the City Council of Central South, the very own Dan Sherr. I have put Dan's packet that he's assembled and the memo that he, that he wrote on everybody's desk. There's a bill before the State House sponsored by Rep. K. Khan to ban what is called conversion therapy. This is fraudulent practice that paints homosexuality as a mental illness to be quote-unquote cured and treated. And for LGBT minors, this is an issue that still needs to be addressed today. Massachusetts is actually a little bit further behind than some of our states across the country in banning this practice. So we want the Boston City Council to step up and voice our opinion on this issue, that Boston should be a place where this freedom is guaranteed as well. And just to get into the nitty-gritty a little tiny bit about the details, the bill seeks to ban conversion therapy from being practiced by licensed, state-licensed therapists. So we're not infringing on the right to free speech or privacy for adults 18 and older. It doesn't apply. It's really about protecting our minors and making sure that if our government is licensing individuals to be licensed therapists, they are not engaging in this behavior. And that advertisements promoting this as, as therapy, as some, as mental health treatment, that that could be subject to the Attorney General's review. So I would ask, given the tight timeline with regards to the state's process, that we suspend and pass today and ask for all of your support on this matter.
Yep. Thank you, Councilor Wu. Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to commend Councilor Wu for bringing this forward and thank Rep. Khan for her leadership in this space. When we all participated in the, the pride, flag raising on City Hall Plaza, there was a survivor of conversion therapy who spoke and gave a riveting, sobering, devastating account to what he experienced and survived. This is a violation of human rights. It's plain and simple, child abuse. So this is about human rights, protecting our children, and also protecting consumers. So it's just simply the right thing to do. And I do appreciate very much the reminder that just because we have marriage equality does not mean that our advocacy and our work is over when it comes to those issues facing the LGBT community, everything from housing discrimination to employment discrimination. And then finally, you know, the work that we've all done collectively to protect our children from human trafficking abuses, from violence in the city, from child abuse. This is just one more abuse that we need to protect our children from. And in the same way that we've made investments in trauma to support those who have been victims of violence or of abuse, I hope that we'll also consider how we can support survivors of conversion therapy, because they are at greater risk and more susceptible to suicidal thoughts and depression and shame. So I thank Councilor Wu for bringing this forward and look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Flaherty.
Please, Mr. President, add my name, and I second her motion to, to suspend and adopt.
Please add Councilor Flaherty's name, Councilor Baker, Councilor Siomo, Councilor Jackson, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Murphy, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Presley, Councilor Yancy, Councilor Zaken. Counselor, add the chair's name, Councilor Lamatina. Would you like your name added? And add Councilor Lamatina's name. At this time, Councilor Wu moves suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1245. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Docket 1245 has been adopted.
Docket number 1246, Councilor Jackson offered the following order, that pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 233, Section 8, the Boston City Council's Special Committee on the 2024 Olympics, Richard Davy, to appear before the Special Committee on August 13th, 2015, at 1:00 AM. I think it should be PM, to discuss and provide the complete original 2024 Summer Olympic Bid 1.0, including redacted information in Chapters 5 and 6, and how that impacts the city of Boston and its residents.
Councilor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like the record to reflect that in the, in the actual order, it says PM.
Just. Enough words.
So although this is an urgent matter, 1:00 AM is unacceptable time. And the Boston City Council is required and has a mandate by the people of the city of Boston to see any document that makes financial commitment on behalf of the city of Boston. And in fact, a couple short weeks ago, the mayor of the city of Boston put forward his budget. And he actually doesn't even get to make a financial commitment without the Boston City Council's blessing and an up or down vote. This is a simple issue of transparency of Boston 2024. A couple short weeks ago, I sat in the seat that Josh Zaken is sitting in right now, and I asked Richard Davy for Chapters 5 and 6, which has the financials of the winning bid. And in fact, it should be noted, we didn't receive any financials that day, even version 2.0, Mr. President, even though the hearing was entitled "Venus and Financial." We deserve to understand what was promised to be delivered by the taxpayers of the city of Boston without the consent, oversight, or even collaboration with the Boston City Council, the legislative branch of the city of Boston. And I will note for the record that no one elected the Boston 2024 Olympic Committee. These individuals were selected. And it, I believe today that we deserve, as a council, as a city, and as the individuals who represent the taxpayers of the city of Boston, to understand whether or not there have been commitments made on our behalf, on the taxpayers' behalf, and who is going to cover those commitments, as well as the potential overruns that could take from the committee that I represent, the Education Committee, that could take from the committee that Council Murphy represents, the Public Safety Committee, and all of the committees that are here. So I think it, it's our, our mandate, it's also our responsibility to demand that an organization who made commitments on our behalf be transparent with us about those commitments and what was said. We deserve to understand, again, what, what was promised on, on our behalf. And so considering that we asked in June, and I want, I want folks to understand, this didn't just happen. We sat in a hearing, and now mind you, we sat in over 30 hearings with Councilor Siomo to decide a $2.8 billion budget. The potential financial burden here is $14 billion, and they've only sat before our body twice. And the time in which they were supposed to actually bring the financials, they chose not to speak about financials at all. So I, I would like, Mr. President, to expedite this process. I, we asked in June, I asked you whether you had received Chapters 5 and 6. When I heard that you had not received them, I sent a letter to them requesting that they be delivered to this body. And they have not been delivered to this body. This is not an anti-Olympic stance, it's a pro-Boston stance. And so I would, I would ask that today, Mr. President, that we can consider suspending and passing and moving forward and getting the people of the city of Boston the answers that they deserve relative to Bid 1.0, the winning bid, that is still standing in front of the United States Olympic Committee. You can't tell us what to look at. We deserve all of this information. And I would just, just simply say, no intelligent businessperson makes a decision, a business decision, without all available financial information. This is about transparency, and also it's about our body. You don't get to make a commitment, a financial commitment, for the Boston City Council, the people of the city of Boston, and the taxpayers of the city of Boston without coming through our body. We've been rebuffed. I believe we've been disappointed, at least I'm disappointed, but we've been disrespected as a body. That should stop today, Mr. President. And I would like, like us to step forward and suspend and pass today and get the documents that we deserve, that our constituents deserve, and that the people who pay taxes in the city of Boston deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Just for the record, I'm going to read our Rule 50. Our Rule 50 is the one which we just most recently passed to handle the power to summon. And I just want to read it clearly so that everyone knows specifically what, what Rule 50 states, okay? And it's pursuant to Chapter 233, Section 8 of the General Laws, that gives the City Council the authority to summon witnesses to attend and testify and to produce books and papers at a hearing before the City Council. An order for summons, and this is our rule, shall be filed by the chair of the City Council Committee invoking the summons power, or shall be filed by the sponsor of the docket invoking the summons power. An order for summons shall state the reason for issuing the summons and the subject matter jurisdiction. The order shall be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Such order shall be taken up for consideration at the next City Council meeting or subsequent City Council meetings, where the council president shall bring the matter before the City Council for consideration. The chairperson of the standing committee shall sign a summons requiring a person to appear before said committee, to be, to be examined in reference to any matter within the scope of the inquiry that's being conducted by such committee. So in context, we, what, we've had two summonses in this term, our term. This is the third one that we request. We built this rule for that particular purpose, to give us some distance between the execution of a summons and a vote on a summons. And this was the process that we all, this is the first time it's coming before us in this, in this manner. So I felt it incumbent upon me to read the rule that we all voted for and approved. So there is still the ability to suspend and pass, as Councilor Jackson has requested, but as I stated at those meetings, that I would object to any suspension of these rules so, so that we could exercise the power to summons Rule 50, as we just recently voted on. So I object, and therefore, there cannot be a vote on that particular matter today. I have lights blinking, and if you all would like to speak at this time, I would allow you to do that. Councilor O'Malley, I think you will.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have long since maintained that if done well and if done right, the Olympics could certainly be a boon to a city or a region. In fact, two or three years ago, I put a hearing order discussing the feasibility of Boston possibly holding the Olympics. What wasn't explicitly said, but certainly understood, is that any exploration, any feasibility, any study, any discussion should be as transparent and as open as humanly possible. Sadly, that does not seem to be the case with Boston 2024. I rise today to support my colleague's call in suspending and passing the rules. This has clearly become an issue, a distraction, quite frankly, that we are dealing with. This is something that we should know. Money, public money, which, of which we were elected to oversee, will be used indirectly or directly for the Olympics, just like it's used indirectly or directly for the Boston Marathon or for a Boston Red Sox game. And we were elected, the most important role we have in our job is to oversee and make sure the public funds are used well and used wisely, and to not allow for the sharing of information that gets to the very heart of the matter is not only unfair to us, but it's clearly not transparent, and it feeds the cynicism that unfortunately this group has, has earned over the last several months. I think we all recognize the fact that it's a living, breathing document. Things change, and certainly things have changed. And I will say Boston 2024 has been open to new ideas or suggestions, but the fact of the matter is this Bid 1.0 is what allowed us to be the U.S. OC choice for the Olympics. So it is important. It is important to see. It's important to give us oversight. So, Mr. President, you are correct with the rule change that we had. You might say it's a cooling-off period that we instituted on ourselves. However, we do have the opportunity to suspend the rules and pass, and I think that's what Council Jackson's calling for, and that's what I certainly support, to subpoena this, to get the information and to make sure that we're able to process and share as much information as humanly possible. So I second his call and hope that we can all indeed suspend and pass. Thank you. Thank you.
So again, for the record, I've objected, and therefore, the matter could be sent to committee. You have lights blinking, and I'm allowing folks to say what's on their mind, but I've already objected, and therefore, there is no call for it to go wherever. Counselor Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to rise and thank Counsel Jackson for putting this forward. This is the right action, this is the right time, it's simply common sense. There are still holes that remain in Bid 2.0 about the financing of the Olympics. This information may be the breadcrumb trail that leads us to better understand the rationale as well as true transparency around the financial commitments. You know, the bottom line is, as an elected official, I do, we all have a fiduciary responsibility. I am not a venture capitalist. I don't get to play startup with people's lives and the city's money. Now, during one of the hearings, we were told that any host committee has to take a leap, any host city has to take a leap of faith. I am a woman of faith, but I can't take a leap of faith on a business proposal such as this without all the information. You know, any decision needs to be one that is thoughtful and fully informed, and in order to be fully informed, we need the facts, and we don't have them all. Throughout this process, there's been a great deal of talk about legacy, and I do have to admit that I remain personally skeptical about the Olympics. The case for me has not been made. This information may help us all to better determine if this is positioning Boston for the kind of legacy and future we really want to write. So, thank you, Counsel Jackson.
I thank you, Counsel Pressley. Counselors Aiken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure procedurally where we are right now, but I would formally second Counsel Jackson's motion to suspend and pass. You know, I don't know if that was done yet, and I would like to say, you know, I applaud his leadership on this issue. As someone who has gone through the subpoena process before we had Rule 50 in place, I certainly do think it's important that we do have an opportunity to talk about this, to discuss this, to make sure this body moves in a deliberate fashion. But we've been moving in deliberate fashion on the Olympics. It's been months now of hearings. I think the first hearing was over four hours, five hours, with public testimony. The most recent one was several hours. And, you know, at this point, I'm a little concerned about an unnecessary delay in saying that, you know, we've asked, I've personally asked, Counsel Jackson asked in the hearing, others have for this information, prying it, pulling your teeth to get some of this information, I think is unnecessary, and we're trying to evaluate such an important issue for the city of Boston. As Counsel Jackson said, we're talking about an item that could be three to four times the city budget, which Counsel Siomo ably led almost thirty hearings on. So to not have this information makes it incredibly hard, I think, for all of us to do our job as fiscal stewards for the city of Boston. You know, I think the fact, you know, I support suspending and passing, you know, given the summer schedule and that there is not a council meeting next week, I think it's important that we move timely. And I would also just add that, you know, if Boston 2024 as a group and their supporters expects this body to sign off on public expenditures or to endorse and pass any sort of financial guarantee, which, as I understand from the hearing in June, is required as part of the IOC agreement, this is completely the wrong way to be going about it, to having us resort to, you know, procedural matters, subpoenas. I don't think anyone likes that word. It's a confrontational word, obviously, but, you know, this is where we are, and I think it's unfortunate that we're here, but I think for myself to do my job representing the folks of District Eight effectively, we need all the information, and it shouldn't be done in a way where we have to be, you know, sort of fighting for it and prying for it. It should be forthcoming from an organization that claims to want to embrace transparency and to be forthright with everyone. So, as I said, I would formally second Counsel Jackson's motion if that hasn't, you know, already officially happened, and I thank him again for his actions on this.
I mean, so I reiterate our own rule that if someone objects to suspension of the rules and passage, no matter can move forward, it gets placed in committee. So because folks had planned to speak on it, I'm allowing that, but I just don't want to send a message here. There's no debate on this matter is going to the Committee of the Whole. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too would like to commend the counsel from District Seven, Counselor Jackson. I believe this is a necessary step. Now, I have not taken a public position supporting or opposing the Olympics in the city of Boston for the year 2024. I have a very romantic notion of the Olympics, and, you know, I think that it would certainly contribute to the status of the city of Boston as a world-class city, but I'm not prepared to give anyone a blank check. And I believe that the cynicism is growing about the Olympics, not just in this body, but throughout the city of Boston, throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I think that's really unfortunate. Because again, I haven't taken a position. I have, however, raised concerns that we're spending too much time on the issue of the Olympics while our children go without a new high school since 1979. I'm concerned about that, and it's not a laughing matter. It's not a laughing matter at all. Children all around the city of Boston go to first-class facilities, and we're sending some of our children to storefronts and outmoded facilities, and this body has the opportunity to do something about it. But I wish just one-tenth of the amount of time and thought given to the issue of the Olympics was spent on building facilities for our children, who are right now going to second-class facilities. Even today, our children can't even go swimming at the Marshall Community Center. I wish we spent some time talking about that, as we have during briefly during the budget process. But I am here, Mr. President, to certainly acknowledge the point that you made very clearly, that there are certain matters that require unanimous consent. Any member of this body can object to this or any other late file for that matter. And this is not a late file, I understand that. But I agree with Counselor Zake, you know, we're not going to meet until August 12th. And I don't even know if we're having the opportunity to have a Committee of the Whole meeting prior to that time. So everyone has to justify their own votes one way or the other. I, for one, would like to err on the side of transparency and put the pressure where it belongs, and that is, the proponents of 2024 Olympics in Boston made commitments to this body that would provide that information. And based on what I understand, they have yet to do so. So I would support Counselor Jackson's effort in terms of suspension and passing and feeling that, once we do reconvene, passing the subpoena order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some questions, one of them being, I thought when we left the last council meeting for the Olympics, that we were setting up an additional meeting to talk about the finances. I'd like to, if to you, we could answer that question, when that next hearing is. I just personally think that trying to get this information through subpoena sends the message that the City Council is all against the Olympics. I, like Counsel Yancey, am not for or against yet. I think 2.0 is far better than 1.0. I look at my district with Columbia Point being built up for a master plan that was, I was part of that planning process. We sat for two years as a community to talk about that point and talk about what that whole new neighborhood would look like. And then when the financial downturn happened, that whole plan was taken from us as a community. This is a way for that plan to actually be built. So I personally think that the subpoena looks as if we're being antagonistic towards 2024. Maybe that's the way we need to be, but I'd like to, if you could answer when that next meeting to talk about the finances, that next committee hearing would be, that's where I thought we were as a body, waiting on that. We are in the middle of the summer here, and right now, there's no blank check in front of us to sign right now. I believe there is time there, so if we answer that offline, if you can answer that now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. There is a scheduled meeting for finance that has not been scheduled, it's imminent, and that the president, the new president of the 2024, Steve Paguioga, is, we're trying to schedule him so that he'll be here to answer all our questions. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I thought I might. I think, you know, we're talking about Rule 50, which is a new rule. I think you're falling back on Rule 33, saying that it needs unanimous consent on a day that it's introduced to be passed, otherwise it goes to committee. And I think that's what you are quoting is Rule 33. I was familiar with Rule 33, I'm not as familiar with Rule 50. I do want to commend Counsel Jackson for trying to get to the bottom of the mystery here, for doing, for leading us, and we've all been part of it, to do our due diligence on this. I don't know what the difference between 1.0 or 2.0 is with regards to Chapters Five and Six. I think Counsel Jackson may know something, but I don't know that was in the first and is not in the second. I do know that no one, other than the mayor and the council, the elected leadership of the city, can speak to or agree to pay any bills on behalf of the taxpayers of Boston. And I think that's what we're all trying to get at. And I find that the two hearings that I was at, I find the tone that comes from Boston 2024 to be off-putting, arrogant, condescending, and I don't know why, because in the end, it's going to need an up or down vote of us, so why come in and talk to us in the manner that you can't have this information? They need something from us, yet they're refusing to give us information in a timely fashion to help us fashion a position to give them a vote, one way or the other. And I think they're damaging their own public relations. They have got out of the box on the wrong foot, and they continue on the wrong foot. Counselor Jackson said it best. Who elected them? No one. They're a bunch of appointed officials, or they appoint each other or something, and they used to be, have a title in public realm and they don't now. And I just don't know where this thing is headed, other than off a cliff, because I said clearly at the last hearing that I am not voting to appropriate taxpayer funds for a private purpose, and I think that was echoed pretty much roundly in this chamber. But they don't seem to get that at Boston 2024. I understand you're using the rules to do so, to, because if we didn't have rules, it would be a free-for-all in here. And I wanted to, I was not laughing at the fact that the gentleman who was a previous speaker brought up Mattapan High School. He does that often. I was laughing at the fact that he was violating the rules because he talks about Mattapan High on every issue, and you're supposed to stick to the subject matter at hand. And that's just an inside joke. It wasn't the fact that I was laughing at the fact that they're a substandard school, just laughing at the fact that the rules are constantly flaunted around here. So I support you in your invocation of the rule, Mr. President, but I do believe Counselor Jackson is on the right track to get the right answers from the people who seem, at this point, not to want to give them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. And just for clarification of the rules, my articulation of 50 was because it was a new rule, and it was one that we all set, and both Counsel Jackson, I, and Counsel O'Malley spent significant amount of time developing the language so that we had all of these opportunities. You're right that I'm invoking Rule 33 and object, and as part of that, those open discussions in a working session, I articulated that in the beginning, I will object to suspension and passes so that we can get this rule and give it some substance and fortification, and therefore, take a summons request and sit down and deliberate it. We're not deliberating the substance of the request, we're deliberating the rule, I'm just saying Rule 50, and I'm invoking 33 so that I would object and we'll move forward. I see two more lights flashing, and at this point, I feel like just entering the matter into the record, but I see two more lights flashing. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to go on the record on this matter. It is true, the people of Boston deserve a city council that is deliberative, that is thoughtful and fact-based, but there are times that justify exceptions, and unfortunately, I think the very first time this rule is going to be applied, I believe should be an exception. The Olympics are potentially a huge cost overrun on a very tight timeline, and that blank check on a tight timeline is a bad formula for Boston. Every day that goes by before the September deadline, which is their deadline to make their next communication to the IOC, as I understand it, is one more day that the council is not getting the information to deliberate, that the people of Boston are not getting the information to voice their opinions. So I believe at the end of the day, this summons is going to go through, the subpoena's going to go through, the people support it. It sounds like the body wants to support accessibility, transparency. The way that it's worded for August 13th is after our next council meeting anyway, so there would be the potential to vote on it at that meeting, as I'm understanding, but open to clarification. But I just wanted to go on record that I believe this time is, it's a matter that is so large and so time-sensitive that I would have voted to suspend and pass today.
Counsel Yancey, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Yancey, no, I'm not giving you the floor, I'm referencing you as a person. Thank you. Counselor Yancey was quite clear that one person can object to this, that's Rule 33, as Counsel Murphy has suggested. Counsel O'Malley has articulated that we did deliberate on 50, and you all supported it. And at any time when you want the summons, the idea of Rule 50 was so that we would have some distance between the request for a summons and the actual initiation of a summons. You raised the issue about the date. The date is irrelevant. The committee chair has to decide the date of any further hearing. And he was asking, in Counselor Jackson's order, he identified a date for this to occur. It could be, like, to have it occur by, or, but the date of the hearing has not been set. That has to be set by the Chair of the Special Committee, who has to sign the summons based on that. So without any further articulation, Counsel Lamontini, you have.
That we do get this information, and I do respect Rule 50, it's something that we worked on. I would just ask that we have, if we're going to have a Committee of the Whole, a meeting on the Committee of the Whole, that happens soon, sooner or later, because this is a very important issue to the people that we represent, and the information that he's looking for, I think is very important for all of us to make that decision, so that's all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket 124, oh, excuse me, the council will be back in order. Docket 1246 is assigned to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, Docet 1246 is assigned to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, Madam Clerk, there are four late file matters in the hands of the clerk, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Uh, hearing no objection, the matters are so added to the agenda. The clerk will read the first addition to the agenda. They are, um, personnel in nature? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Uh, the first late file matter filed on July 22nd, 2015, Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the first late file matter has passed.
Second late file matter, July 22nd, 2015.
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, uh, the second late file matter has passed.
Third late file matter, July 22nd, 2015, Counselor Linnahan.
Uh, Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the third late file matter has passed.
Fourth late file matter, offered by Counselor Stephen J. Murphy in the city of Boston in the year 2015. Order for hearing regarding pilot contributions for higher and medical education institutions. An order that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council shall examine the pilot contributions by higher and medical institutions for the years 2014 and 2015, filed in the city council on July 22nd, 2015.
Uh, Counselor Murphy on the fourth late file matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back in 2006, I believe, I had lobbied the council president, Michael Flaherty at the time, to create a special committee of the city council for, um, payment in lieu of taxes. Because, uh, our non-for-profit friends in educational and medical institutions, some of our highest employed, uh, people who employ are employed by the, uh, the most people are employed by in Boston are tax-exempt for property taxes. And, um, we held several hearings over the course of a couple of years. Um, and Mayor, at the time, Tom Manino appointed a task force, which met, met in 2008 and 2009. And, um, he put Steve Kidder, the former revenue commissioner, who's an attorney with Hemingway and Barnes across the street, as the chair of the committee. And I was on the committee as an elected representative. And, um, several of our not-for-profit partners, um, were on the committee. Boston University's president, Robert Brown, was on the committee. BI Deaconess Medical Center had a vice president, Pat McGovern, on there. The president of Wentworth Institute was on there. And every other major institutional player in the city was at the table. They may not have been on the committee, but they were at the table. It was in room 603. We met monthly. Sam Tyler was even there. And we worked out a new formula for payment in lieu of taxes, which kind of, uh, codified it, um, if you will, so that there is a, now a real formula that everybody is supposed to. Uh, and what we did was we sent out assessors to each and every one of these nonprofits. And we assessed the value of the land and buildings that they all hold. And, uh, they came back with, uh, figures on what they should pay where they tax commercially. And then we divided that by 25%. And we said, well, we're going to give you a 75% rate off, but here's what we want you to pay in terms of payment in lieu of taxes. And they came to a number. And the number set sticker shock to all of our friends in the not-for-profit world who, um, realized that they were way underpaying and underserving the residents of Boston. Um, I say that because, um, they had lobbied to have it rolled in over a five-year period because the differences in the amounts were so great. And we acceded to that. Um, they also lobbied to get half of their pilot contributions to be in terms of services. They wanted more than that, which we agreed to as well. Um, but everybody at the table agreed to the formula and everybody at, at the table agreed to continue paying to the formula. And now we find out a few years later that most of them aren't. They've just abrogated their responsibility. The only way I can see, since Tom Manino is no longer the mayor, um, is to bring it back as an issue in this council. And I was on that committee and I, I was dealing with the folks in that room. And I think it's important that we get them in here and question as to why they're walking away from stuff they've agreed to five or six years ago. Every dollar less they, they walk away from, uh, goes on to the tax burden for the property taxes for the city of Boston. So I look forward to a hearing expedited, I hope. I tried to do this last year. I couldn't really get it together, um, for a timely hearing. Uh, but, uh, we've got plenty of time now. And, uh, it's an issue where they're all walking away. And I'm hoping maybe we can hold a hearing and get them in and get them to agree to keep their word to the people on that committee and to the taxpayers of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Zecham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, ask that my name be added to this order and, uh, compliment Counselor Murphy on his work on this over the past years and continued work, uh, someone who represents a district with quite a few institutions of higher education, some of the most egregious lowballers on this, uh, on this front. I think it's incredibly important that we, uh, we act on this and we make sure that, you know, despite all the benefits that they bring to our economy, they're also our costs, particularly in our residential neighborhoods, such as Mission Hill, where I represent, where we're college students. Um, you know, routinely, uh, need extra police, fire, inspectional services, public works, uh, from the city of Boston. And I think it's important that everyone pay their fair share in the city. So look forward to a timely hearing and hopefully, uh, resolving this and improving the pilot compliance rate for our institutions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Zecham. Please add Counselor Zecham's name at my name, Madam Clerk. Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Lamontina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. And for the record, I did not laugh or in any way act disrespectful when Counselor Murphy was speaking. I rise to support, uh, this effort. Um, I know that this is a, um, issue that our good colleague raises frequently and it's very appropriate. Um, I believe that the pilot, uh, payment issue does require repeated attention. I believe that there should be no institution that pays more to its chief executive officer than it makes in pilot payment. Yet we know that that does in fact exist. Uh, one time, we even had one of our presidents being paid more than $2 million a year. And, uh, the pilot payment didn't even come close. So I, I rise to, uh, support this effort and tell, uh, all my colleagues that I give everyone the utmost respect and decorum and I expect no less from any one of you. Uh, so with that said, I'd like to have my name added.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add Counselor Yancey's name. In that matter, we will place him in the committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, uh, anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Seeing no lights, I will move on. Consent agenda. There are five late file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask, um, oh, Counselor Yancey, for what purpose do you rise?
Support you give to the Charles C. Yancey Book Fair. I lend my name to the effort, but my staff and the community and the, and the sponsors, uh, really do all the work. It's taking place, as you know, uh, Mr. President, this Saturday. And I take this opportunity to invite, uh, any of the viewing public, anyone in these chambers, to join us. Uh, all of us support literacy in the city of Boston. And to date, uh, our book fair has distributed more than 650,000 books to the families of Boston since 1987. We have more than 40,000 new books ready for distribution. Uh, my, my wife, Marzella, and my daughter, Ashley, and chief of staff, Lynette Frazier, who's also the book fair coordinator, and dozens of others, as I speak, are processing all these books. Uh, and I, uh, know that it would not be possible to host this type of event without the support of the Boston Police Department, the, the libraries, the administration. I want to thank Mayor Walsh for, uh, for supporting this effort as well. And just looking forward to a fun day, uh, this Saturday, 12 noon to 3 PM at the Reggie Lewis Center. Um, and I never take that support for granted, uh, Mr. President. And it's a, an event that has, uh, almost a life of its own. Uh, this is the 29th year. God willing, we'll be able to do the 30th year this time next year. Thank you very much, and I invite everyone to participate. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Yancey. Uh, I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo, Caroline Mary Collins. For Counselor Lamontina, Mary Ellen Ren Howell. For the chair, Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Murphy, Deborah A. Flaherty. For Counselor Murphy, Richard Devere. For the chair and Counselor Flaherty, Ann M. McDonough and Margaret E. Collins. For Counselor O'Malley, Laura Ducha and Kathleen Flynn. For Counselor Yancey, Anthony Dowden, Naomi Mickles, Bishop Archie Foxworth and Andrew Stitt. For Counselor Baker, John Quish. And for Counselor McCarthy, Ambrose Abjima. A moment of silence, please. The chair? Counselor Yancey?
Thank you so much. I just have to make a correction. It's Bishop Foxworth's father, not the bishop himself who passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, is it Archie?
I believe so.
Okay. For Archie Foxworth, Bishop Foxworth, there. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, August 12th, at 12 noon. All those in favor of adjournment say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the council so adjourned.